Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 1st, 2021 meeting of the North Carolina State Board of Education. I'm Eric Davis, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. And welcome all Board members, advisors, staff, onsite visitors, online listeners, and Twitter followers. Now please know that you can follow our work on our Twitter page at edstateboard underscore NC, and you can also follow the meeting and see all of our materials online. For our visitors and those listening, today's agenda involves our Board Committee meetings, and tomorrow's agenda is the official meeting date when the Board will vote on its action items. The 2021-22 school year continues to present us with continued challenges and opportunities for our students, schools, and districts, including a new pandemic variant, flooding in our Western districts, and exacerbated staffing shortages. While the start of the year may be difficult, we've overcome greater challenges before and will no doubt overcome these again. This Board will continue to advocate on behalf of our students for the resources and policies to support the ever-growing needs in our public schools. And as our Western districts work to reopen schools, this Board and DPI will work to determine the needs that we can address as we did with our partner Fast NC in 2019 and Also, this is the time of year when we review testing and accountability results for the prior year. As noted earlier, we're still in a pandemic, and these results allow the Board, DPI, and local districts and charter schools to determine the extent of learning in the prior year and to plan appropriately for student learning this school year. These results show the resilience of our students and dedication of our teachers and others to persevere despite many disruptions to learning. These scores are one of many tools we'll use to continue to develop instructional plans to meet the academic needs of each and every student. Most of all, because of these results, we will rededicate our efforts to providing every student the opportunity to obtain a sound, basic education. And recently, the Board submitted a request to the U.S. Department of Education and to our partners in the General Assembly for a waiver from certain accountability elements for the 2020-21 school year. We recently received approval on both of those requests. Board members, you're reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board. Does any member of the Board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record, and if during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. Board members, you've seen the agenda for over a week and had the opportunity to review it. I ask if there are any requests for changes to the agenda. Hearing none, I request a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. White is our second. Second by Vice Chair Duncan. Dr. Townsend Smith, we've called the role and captured the vote.
Yes, sir. Ms. Camnetz?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? Mr. Hall? Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Chastain? Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall? Chair Davis?
Yes. Motion carries. We have an agenda. Thank you. Now, before we begin our committee meetings, I'd like to welcome our newest advisor, Ms. Brenda Stevens from the Chapel Hill Carvera District. Ms. Stevens, we're delighted to have you and look forward to your coaching and contribution to us as you give us advice on matters before us for our students. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I definitely have to say something. You know, in Orange County, we have two school districts, and I'm a proud member of the Orange County School Board, not the same as I, Eugene Ford, so thank you, thank you very much for the input. You know, in Orange County, we have two of every things.
Thank you so much for correcting me on that. We honor your service in Orange County. All right, we'll now proceed to our committee meetings, and the first committee of the day is the Business Operations Committee chaired by Vice Chair Duncan. Vice Chair Duncan?
Thank you. Along with my colleague Todd Chastain, we head the Business Operations Committee, and today is a dream come true for the many fans of the Biz Op Committee. We have 21 items, and I know... I have struggled to identify who those fans are. I'm not sure there are any, but nonetheless...
I'm happy to be a fan.
Thank you. Nonetheless, here we go. Biz Op 1 is approval of contracts over $500,000. We have four, and we're going to do our standard NFL, they have a two-minute drill. We have a one-minute drill for these contracts. So I think Julian Alhar, you have the first contract for technology services.
Good morning. I'm Julian Alhur, Director of Enterprise Systems and New Technology Services. Thank you, Deanna. I forgot to remove my mask. We are requesting an extension for one year and one optional year for the NCAID Cloud IAM Service. During that one first-year extension, we're going to implement federation with local portals such as ClassLink and Clever. Those are becoming very popular in the districts during the remote learning, and we're hoping that that would give us time to bid it in the first year and implement it in the second year.
Thank you.
No problem.
Excellent. And some members may recall, we have had another cloud contract earlier this year. This is a different cloud contract for a different set of services, so just for clarification, if anyone had that question. Next, we have Ms. Tracy Tillis, who is one of our IT Managers and Technology Services. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. I am here for Amendment 8 of the ECATS contract for additional functionality and work for that system in a total of $10,360. This functionality will add tracking ability for parentally-placed private school students. Try to say that three times fast. And this is just adding that tracking functionality within the system. We've had to be doing it outside of the system up to this point, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. I'm going to go slightly out of order. Our next contract is Ms. Amy Ryan, Director of Office of Early Learning and Read to Achieve, and this is an amendment to the Amplify contract. I believe that will be a good amendment.
Yes, good morning, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, members of the Board. All we are asking this time is if we can remove TRC from the Amplify contract, replace that with our Dibbles 8, and the money that we have saved, we have also added the Spanish R&amp;D version, so we have that for our dual immersion classrooms as well as professional development. So we're here to take approval for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on that? Thank you. That represents a good expansion of our capabilities, and so that's a very good outcome. Thank you for the work. Our last contract is Dr. Latricia Townsend, and I called her last because she's going to have the next few items as well. Dr. Townsend, welcome.
Good morning. This particular contract is with our partners at the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, the SERF Center. This contract will enable us to have additional support for required oversight for the ESSA portfolio, so we would receive assistance with providing technical assistance to LEAs and completing our monitoring and compliance requirements. And so for this particular contract, it provides support for our homeless education program. It provides support for foster, and then it also provides support for our 21st Century Learning Communities Grant, as well as two positions for our consolidated programs. This particular grant is $1.7 million, and it represents across each of the areas 12 FTE, as well as a variety of services that would come along with supporting the ESSA plan in North Carolina.
Thank you. Very important grant for our most vulnerable students, so thank you for that. Any questions or comments? All right, not hearing any. Let's move on to Biz Op 1, and Dr. Townsend, this is also your item in which we're being asked to approve the submission of an ESEA fiscal year 19 waiver at the conclusion of a public comment period that's still in progress.
Okay, so...
So just to be clear, when this presentation is completed, if there are any changes that are made as a result of a public comment, those will be made apparent back to the Board.
Yes, sir. So I would provide a... What I plan to do is to provide a summary through Dr. Townsend Smith of all of the public comments that we receive to the Board, and if there are any questions, we are happy to go back and forth so that we're able to make a submission. This waiver request is very similar to the one that was submitted last year. It just enables us to extend the period of availability, as well as it will enable us to allow an additional time period for carryover of funds. And so I prepared just a short presentation, and so again, we would like to waive the carryover limitation, and we would like to extend the period of availability for these funds in our ESSA portfolio. And so if you'll move to the next slide. So within Title 1, there is a 15% carryover limitation. We do in North Carolina have ED Flex, which will... would enable us to actually provide a waiver to LEAs once every three years. However, if we were to receive this particular waiver, it would enable us to go ahead and do that blanket waiver and not have to do it on a case-by-case basis for each LEA. I will tell you that districts have had trouble spending their money because a lot of what they had planned to do when they first filled out their applications, COVID got in the way, and they were not able to spend their money, and so that would enable them to do that. The last portion of the waiver is to actually extend the period of availability. So these particular funds would expire at the end of this month, September 30th of 2021. Having this waiver in place would enable districts to be able, as well as the ESEA, it would enable us to use any remaining funds through September 30th of 2022. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Townsend. As everyone, I think, can see, this is a waiver that's very important in terms of flexibility and making important use of important funds for our students, so... And it's also, it's very indicative of the level of detail that Dr. Townsend and her colleagues in the funding area with federal funds have to take, must take, and in fact do take to make sure we stay apprised and on top of the many, many different federal funding requirements, and they were complicated before, and now our program today for Biz Op is primarily made up of ESEA funding, or ESSR 2 funding, or ESSR 3 funding. It's extremely complicated with audit requirements, and thank you very much for the type of attention to detail that you're bringing to this.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on this? All right, let's move to Biz Op 3 then, which is our McKinney-Vento Homeless Education of Children and Youth Status update, and as it relates to the American Rescue Plan and the funding that is intended for these students out of that plan. Dr. Townsend?
And so I am going to invite my colleagues to come up. So that would be Ms. Lisa Phillips, who serves as our State Coordinator for the Education of Homeless Children and Youth, as well as Ms. Pamela Story, who joins us from Cumberland County Schools. She has recently been named as the North Carolina Homeless Liaison of the Year, and so this presentation will be a two-part presentation. So in the first part, we are responding to a Board request. We were asked to provide a little bit of information about the landscape of homeless education in North Carolina, and so who better to do that than our homeless coordinator and our North Carolina Homeless Educator of the Year? And then the last portion of the presentation will be requesting permission to provide funding under the American Rescue Plan Homeless and Children... Homeless Children and Youth Fund, and so I will talk a little... I will come back before you to actually give details about that. But before we really start, I really want to tell you how much these women champion students. They go above and beyond to make sure that the needs of students experiencing homelessness are met. And so for me, coming into this role of Director, I used to say homeless students, and so Lisa Phillips, she has helped me change my lingo. They are students who are experiencing homelessness. They are not homeless, so we don't want to put bounds. We don't want to put labels on students. And so I am going to step aside to allow you to meet Ms. Lisa Phillips, who will let you know what her office does with regards to supporting students who are experiencing homelessness. She'll give you an overview of how many students there are, and then they'll talk to you about some of the services that are provided at the state level as well as the LEA level, and then you will have the great honor to hear from the tiny but mighty Ms. Pam Story. That's the nickname that she's been given, but you will hear from her as she shares her experiences as a homeless liaison and what she goes through day by day to really support those students. So Lisa?
I'm a little choked up. Can I take my mask off? So, good morning. She did, she got me a little choked up. Good morning, Superintendent Truitt, Chairman Davis, and Vice Chair Duncan, as well as the rest of the Board. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you a little information regarding students who are experiencing homelessness. The Education for Homeless Children and Youth Program is also known as the North Carolina Homeless Education Program, and it is located, as Dr. Townsend said, at the SERF Center at UNCG. We are housed with the National Center for Homeless Education, which is the U.S. Department of Education's Technical Assistance Center. It's great to be there with all those experts in the field. The Homeless Education Program is charged with ensuring that all children and youth, including our pre-K age children who are experiencing homelessness, have access to a public education to which they are entitled to. We do this by ensuring state policies are in compliance with federal laws by providing technical assistance, training, and meetings to homeless liaisons, school officials, and organizations at the local and state level, by monitoring our school districts, including our charter schools, our homeless education programs. If they're in virtual lab, they're also included, and by handling disputes as they relate to the McKinney-Vento Act. Of course, collaborating on all of these activities at the local and state level occur, but they also happen at the national level for effective identification of students in the delivery of services and supporting their academic needs. Next slide, please. So for all this to happen, we are required to follow the McKinney-Vento Act, which is a federal law designed to increase the school enrollment, attendance, and success of children and youth who are experiencing homelessness. To be clear, the Act is the authoritative source of our work at the state level and at the local level. Next slide, please. The law also addresses how identification, enrollment, and the stability of children in school must occur. The academic success and credit accrual are included, along with how a liaison should make the best determination of services and supports for a child who is identified as experiencing homelessness. So this would include the transportation and whether or not they need tutoring services. The law also includes how to ensure our labs and programs in the LEA are being leveraged rather than duplicated, so that we are really focusing on the true needs of the student and collaborations occurring. We do this with migrant education, 21st Century, CTE, EC, early education programs, higher education institutes, and anything else you can think of. They're covered. So let's talk just for a moment about the definition of homelessness. The law defines homelessness as individuals who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. To be a bit more specific, a fixed residence is one that is stationary, permanent, and not subject to change. A regular residence is one that is used on a regular basis, and a residence that is sufficient for meeting the physical and psychological needs typically met in a home environment are considered adequate. Next slide, please. So what does that mean for North Carolina schools? Well, during the 1819 school year, the North Carolina schools identified 34,725 children in our state as experiencing homelessness. That's one too many. Across the country, we have all been impacted by the pandemic, but the greatest impact has been on a responsible population of children, that being children who are experiencing homelessness. As the pandemic was beginning to unfold, we were identifying well over 27,000 children in our state. By the time March and June arrived, we were down to 28,887 children that we could find and be able to serve. In the last year, not having our children in buildings, we were only able to locate 23,764 children. But that doesn't mean we didn't find ways to try to locate them and to find them. Our homeless liaisons went above and beyond to make that happen. The hard part in all of this is that as schools started back, we are flooded with phone calls over the influx of students that are appearing and presenting themselves as homeless. The school liaisons are overwhelmed at this time, trying to make sure that every child's rights are not violated, and making sure services are put in place for them. My staff yesterday shared with me that they thought we were already at 12,000 children. It hasn't been a full week in some places. That's a lot of children. We have a whole year ahead of us. So with that, that's what it looks like here in North Carolina as far as the identification numbers. And I do want to share with you just quickly the types of situations that our students are in. Many of our students in North Carolina, the average is around 76% to 77% average in doubled-up situations. We are now looking at about 82% to 84% of our children in doubled-up situations, and they're the most difficult to identify. Our families are living in shelters, hotels, hotels, trailers, crowd parks, cars, private bridges, bus stations, campgrounds, abandoned buildings. Some of our children are being trafficked, and we have a whole other slew of children who are unaccompanied homelessness. That means they are completely on their own. Before the pandemic, it was about 10%, now, based on our lower numbers, it's even higher than that. So I have no idea what we're going to see this year, but we know there's a return percent. So as you listened, you would probably agree that this is a pretty comprehensive list of where our children are located and having to spend the night or do their homework in. Some of these places do not provide electricity, or food, or shelter from the elements. I will say that when we look at what our children are facing in school, their impact on their education is significant. If we can get the next one? Illness, depression, anxiety, poor attendance, delayed social skills, academic challenges, and of course, high risk of dropout, and a whole slew of other issues do exist. Our homeless liaisons are expected to find ways to meet the needs that our students have. This is where that collaboration piece is critical, not just internally, but externally. So for them in determining eligibility, it is going to be on case-by-case determination. Thank you for changing that one. There's never a clear-cut situation unless we know that a child's in a shelter. You could have some children in a family who are experiencing homelessness, while others are not. All the living arrangements for children are different. They all are individuals. We are not going to do a cookie cutter answer for any of them. They don't deserve that. We have to look at each and every one independently to understand and know how we should serve them. We're grateful that this information that I just provided to you is listed in the McKinney-Vento Act, and because it's listed there, it also lists what the responsibilities are of the homeless liaison. And I know you'll agree, based on what I said, if you don't, come talk to me, but they really do play a critical role in the implementation of the Act, and they hold numerous titles in the field. Some may be a Director of Student Support Services, some may be an Assistant Superintendent, although I try to discourage that. Sometimes there's not that option. But if... Oh, fair question. She's quick. But in North Carolina, no matter what role they hold, everyone has to have someone identified, and that's where our office steps in to help. When they have so many hats on their shoulder, or maybe they're full-time in their position as a homeless liaison, we're going to be there to provide them with the guidance and support they need to ensure that everyone across the LEA, as the law states, is well-versed in McKinney-Vento, and this is a recurring thing that we have to do to provide that training, ongoing, always, because we have turnover. Teachers need certain information, principals need certain information as it relates to discipline and attendance, right? I can go down the list, but we're all educators, you understand where I'm going with this. The main roles of the homeless liaison are going to be shared today by our Homeless Liaison of the Year, Ms. Pamela Story with Cumberland County Schools. I thought it would be best for you to hear from her. She does a wonderful job not only representing her school district and her students, their families, and our community agencies, but she also represents all our homeless liaisons in the state. So please welcome Ms. Story.
Good morning, Superintendent Truitt, and to all of you here. I am simply delighted to be here with you today, and I'm going to take my mask off. I bring you greetings from Dr. Marvin Connolly, our Superintendent of Cumberland County Schools, and Dr. Mary Black, who is Associate Superintendent of Student Support Services. I serve as the Social Work Coordinator for Cumberland County Schools, and I have a staff of 88 wonderful school social workers who serve as my homeless points of contact. I also am the dropout supervisor, and I have a gentleman, Mr. Rains, who has come on board to assist me, so he holds the role, but I'm the one that just received the information about our upcoming dropout report and will help him as we try to ensure that we can find those students, many of whom are homeless. I also serve as the Student Government Liaison, and a myriad of roles that I can't even remember as I stand before you. If you call Dr. Connolly and ask him if they want it done, they will call Pam Story, probably because I've been around for a while. But just to make it short and sweet like me, I stand today representing all of the homeless liaisons in North Carolina, and there are at least 100 of us, if not more. Oh, okay. Because... Oh, okay. Because we have our charter schools. Oh, three hundred. That's right. Well, I'm sorry. I know it's a hundred counties. But I represent each and every one of them because this is a calling. This is not a job. If I had my way, I would only work with homeless children and not do anything else. But at this time, we do not have a separate position. And part of that, Lisa, I have to share with you is because I don't want to let go of homeless education in Cumberland County Schools. But I thank you for the money that we're getting, because I do plan to bring on additional staff. Serving the needs of children has been difficult across the board, not just homeless children, but all children. We say from the haves and the have-nots, we get out there, our social workers are now beating the bushes trying to find students. We've lost so many students across the state. But it is our job, and I want you to know today, that it's my commitment to represent, as a homeless liaison for North Carolina, to represent all of the liaisons and all of the staff who care about children experiencing homelessness. And as Lisa said, and I just made an error, they're not homeless, but they're in transition. And I like to say many times, it's through no fault of their own. So they touched my heart over the years. Parents can be difficult, but it's all about the children. And when you come to a school in North Carolina, you won't be able to pick out those children. You know that. You don't know that they're homeless, and many of them do not know they're homeless as well. And that's because we provide, thanks to your support, we provide whatever we can so that they will be successful. So my goal this year is to focus, we got the basic needs down, Lisa, but let's talk about special populations. Let's talk about those students, making them career-ready. Some of them are not going to college, but we got to get them ready. We got to find them, number one, help them to be successful, and I thank you for all of your support. And if it was not for Lisa Phillips, she is a champion, and I'm not here to toot her horn, but she leads us with such expertise and such compassion. And I just thank you so much. And if you have any questions, I'm here. But I just thank you for your support and for allowing me to speak to you today.
Ms. Story, thank you. And Lisa Phillips, thank you for where you've been here before, and we always appreciate it. What a huge heart you all have. I don't know how tiny you ever got in your nickname. I think, I think Tower of Meaningful Power, or something more, something like that is appropriate. Are there any questions or comments that anyone would like to raise? Yes, Ms. White.
Thank you for your work. School for the families falling under the idea of living in transition is the only safe haven. It's the only consistency that those children have when their life is in chaos. And to have advocates at the school level, at the district level, and the state level is the best level of intervention that we could give them in eliminating this critical barrier to success. That being said, when the moratorium on rents occur, and I, I, I think we need to get that back in place. I mean, we can argue about politics, but that's going to happen. And as you mentioned earlier in your presentation, you think that number will rise. I can tell you that number is getting ready to explode. I have firsthand data that suggests that there are families that are six, seven, and eight thousand dollars on rent. When those families are suddenly thrust into temporary loss of housing, there needs to be a system in place for families who have never even considered not having a permanent, sustainable place to live, that they could easily navigate, what happens? Can my child stay at the same school? I finally found a place to live for a month, but I don't want my child to be removed from the school where every safe structure is in place to keep them on the path towards academic success. And my question comes to what are you doing to plan for a, a need and an absolute assurance that the number of children and families that are homeless is getting ready to explode, and how they might have access to the systems that we have in place that they might not currently know about?
So of course, the McKinney-Vento Act does require public notice about the rights of children who are experiencing homelessness. Homeless liaisons are also required to share with parents what their rights are, as both our children who are experiencing homelessness, what their rights are to be able to stay in their school of origin, especially if it's in their best interest. Sometimes parents don't want that, but we, we do take that time to process with them. First and foremost, that, that is a piece that's been around for oodles of years, and we have ensured that the state of North Carolina is flooded with that information. It's available on every single LEA's website. Some districts are tweaking it out just a little bit right now. But you can pretty much go to anybody's website, and there's that information as well. So that's the first place. The second is ensuring that we are educating our frontline folks, meaning our data folks, our enrollment specialists, staff in the front office, giving them enough to make a decision to refer that individual either to the point of contact in the building or directly to the homeless liaison, if there's even the slightest red flag. School districts have also been changing their enrollment forms to have some very specific questions that have been provided to us from the National Center for Homeless Education, so that there, there are just enough to, to raise the stakes a little bit for us to guess something's not right here. We need to hear more. We need to learn more. So those are the first steps. Additionally, we are going out into the communities. A lot of our homeless liaisons, they have someone who's appointed to work in shelters, and also like with YMCA's and other community programs, and going out and making sure that information's being provided to them about the services that are available under the law, whether they're homeless or not. I also am part of the Violence Estate for North Carolina, and I am meeting with them on a weekly basis to talk about our concerns and discuss strategies and how we can partner together, not just at the state level, but also at the local level, to meet the needs of our families and our students. As school was starting, we ensured that all of our children had backpacks and school supplies. Even if we didn't know they were coming in, we had them ready to go, and we still do, and will continue to do that. We don't want any child on the first day of school to be denied. We don't want them to not have a meal. We are going to make sure that they get taken care of immediately. Our transportation directors, our child nutrition folks, our school counselors, the list is really endless. We spend an enormous amount of time ensuring, not just from my office, but our homeless liaisons. This is what's required. This is what we need to do. We do have a shortage of, of bus drivers, as we all know, and that's been a bit of a challenge. But we're a little lucky because we have some resources that we can tap into through Title I set aside, as well as our McKinney-Vento sub grant funds, and if approval comes with the ARC funding that we have submitted. Those resources are going to be available to use for other sources to get our children to school. Does that answer your question?
The infrastructure that you have in place, I don't second guess. It's parental access. When, when parents are suddenly thrust into, into chaos, and that is exactly what it is. They, they might not have access. They've grabbed everything that they can before they have to get out. They don't know to go to the school. They, unfortunately, they hide that situation. A teacher in the classroom could go six to eight weeks before they ever know that their student had, I mean, there are symptoms. The child might be sleeping in class. There might be absenteeism, but there's that six to eight week period where the guardian or the parent is scrambling, and they don't know who to reach out to. And I'm just recognizing that, being proactive in putting, knowing what's coming, putting that out there at the fingertips of parents, and probably the classroom teacher is the best one to be able to identify first. Because unless the guardian or the parent communicates, then the school doesn't know, and they don't have access to the amazing wealth of things that we have in place to support students and families. So it's the disconnect between what happens on the family end and, and them knowing and, and having access. Most folks wouldn't even know what McKinney-Vento is, especially if they haven't lived in that cycle of transition for a long period of time. If it's a sudden, if it's, if it's a sudden incident, getting that information, where, where that, where that information lies and getting that to families would be my advocacy.
Absolutely, and I think that's something we are always striving for as well. At the local level, it's always going to look different because every community's different. Every resource that's in a community is different. I know that when the pandemic hit, that was a real wake-up call for many of our liaisons, and people got creative real quick. And some people still struggled. And that, that could really be detrimental to a family or a student who is living in their car or out on the street. So absolutely, I, I agree with you, and we will always make every effort to try to avoid those things from happening and to connect our parents, homeless or not. I will say that throughout our school district, there are materials that are continuously given to families, whether it's with the packets, of course, they have to have it in the board policies about McKinney-Vento. But again, you know, like you said, when you're not expecting that, and you're just grabbing for whatever, it, it's a challenge. And there are warning signs. We may not know that first day. But if we can find out as soon as possible, we're going to do everything we can to help that family to have shelter, to have coverage. We have resources available at the state level now in many of our communities where the local COCs, continuing care are assisting with housing and housing vouchers. But you're exactly right. This moratorium is getting ready to lift. This is going to be astronomical for us. And we know that, and we are prepared, and we won't give up on our children, not one minute.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, not hearing any. Let me give our, I, I know Dr. Townsend's coming back with further items to, to help support the work that you're doing, but let me please express on behalf of all the citizens of North Carolina, certainly this board, our profound thanks for all the work that's being done. We've all been taught that those who have the least, we owe them most, and these children, we owe a lot to. And as North Carolinians, we have the heart. It's our nature, and we need to step up and serve these students in the very best ways that we possibly can so that they have the best opportunity for success as they, as they navigate with their families in very difficult circumstances. So thank you for your commitment to it. It means a lot to all of us.
Thank you. And I do want to say it's a team effort. It's from a leadership down, and there's just no way that we could have done this work without everyone's support. You've always been there. You've always been supportive, and I can't thank you enough on behalf of our children in North Carolina. Thank you.
Yes, the thanks go to you and your colleagues. Thank you so much.
So, thank you for your time today.
Dr. Townsend, thank you for bringing us that reported. Please continue.
So I come before you to provide information about the American Rescue Plan. There is a provision within the American Rescue Plan that adds additional dollars to support homeless education. And it came, it's coming to North Carolina in two parts. So we have received the first, well, actually, we now have both parts. But this is the presentation on the first portion of those funds. These funds will be used as an extension of the McKinney-Vento Act. And so I won't bore you in going through all of these details. You've just heard them. But in a nutshell, we will be able to use the additional funds to support homeless education. And what will need to happen is really outlined in McKinney-Vento. North Carolina is receiving twenty-three million dollars for this particular set of funds. For this first portion, we have about five-point-eight million dollars. And so I will come before you, I guess, in another month, to share with you about this other seventeen million dollars. So for these particular funds, they were distributed using a very similar mechanism to regular McKinney-Vento. Individuals who are, who were eligible to receive these funds were already funded through McKinney-Vento. And so we had two avenues to be funded through McKinney-Vento. The first were our regular sub-grantees. And so we typically provide a three-year cycle, and for that, we had about fifty-eight individuals, or fifty-eight individual applicants that are our regular sub-grantees. I came before you earlier this summer and asked for permission to be able to provide an additional set of funds to those who were not current sub-grantees, to get them to start to understand what McKinney-Vento was all about. And so you will see individuals who are LEAs, charters, lab schools, virtual schools, ISD, anybody who actually was receiving these funds, they too were eligible to receive these funds. So for our grant process, we contacted the existing grantees through listserv's emails. We tried to get the word out as best we could that this additional set of funds would be available. We had an application period from June until August. We provided technical assistance to help them understand how they could actually use the funds to really help their students experiencing homelessness, or those at risk for homelessness. Those applications were submitted to Ms. Phillips' office, and they were reviewed. So what you will see is that individuals who were our regular sub-grantees, we were able to double the amount that they received with this particular pot of funds. So we do our grant awards in a tier system, so based on the number of students that you have to serve. And so you could typically receive anywhere from fifteen thousand up to seventy-five thousand dollars with your normal McKinney-Vento funds. With the ARC funds, we were able to double that amount. So now from thirty thousand up to a hundred fifty. If you were a part of that special summer mini-grant, we were giving out an additional four thousand dollars or an additional ten thousand dollars within that mini-grant period. And with these funds, we were able to double the amount that they were able to receive through this. So basically, if you were a recipient, you were able to get twice your typical McKinney-Vento allotment. And so to really put it in perspective, our McKinney-Vento amount that we receive each year is a little over three million. This particular wave of funding is able to really help more students because it's just so much more. So the very first portion is five-point-eight million. That represents almost double what we typically get anyway. So you'll see those numbers being much larger than what we're able to give out with McKinney-Vento. And so in terms of who applied, we had seventy-seven LEAs, thirty-two charter schools, two virtual schools, a lab, and an ISD school. And I know when we had our committee call, there was information requested about, were there individuals who could have applied and chose not to? The answer is yes. We still do have individuals that do choose to leave money on the table. So for instance, we had about twelve charter schools who could have applied for this extra influx of money, but chose not to at this time. Okay? And so just to give you an idea, for our regular sub-grant applications for McKinney-Vento, there are fifty-eight LEAs. But that really comprises sixty LEAs because there is one consortium that is BERTI, Martin, and Perquimens. They got together to make sure that they had at least fifty homeless students, so they would be able to do that. We are encouraging more consortiums, and so we're trying to provide additional technical assistance to really encourage that practice so that people can really tap. assistance to really encourage that practice so that people can really tap into those funds. And then you'll see in terms of the mini-grant applicants, you see them here, 19 were LEA and 36 were charter. And so we are requesting 4.5 of that 5.8 million to go directly out to schools or LEAs. And I will tell you, with McKinney Vento, as well as ARC homeless, there's a requirement that 75% of those funds go directly out the door. The other 25% remains at the state level for additional state-level activities, so funding Ms. Phillips' staff as well as other statewide professional development activities or services that we might provide as a state-level program.
Thank you for that report. As a follow-up to Ms. White's comments earlier, as part of that, the money that's being held back for essentially educational activities and staffing, can there be a particular emphasis put on educational facilities to try to reach some of the parents who are going to newly be in this situation, who are not going to really know what services might be available for their children?
Absolutely, and so one of the things that you will see, the requests that I made in BizOp 1 was for our regular McKinney Vento and other associated programs. We will most likely come before you for the American Rescue Plan. For that $23 million, we will need to submit an American Rescue Plan homeless plan. And in submitting that plan, one of the things that we are recommending is a couple of educational specialist positions that would really be able to lead the charge in that area.
Is the $23 million fund going to be grant-based, or is it going to be able to go to all districts that have home, have students who are without homes?
So the $23 million, it would still have the 75-25 split. And so you will hear Mr. John Kiefer come before you to talk about that $17 million. USED has given us a specific methodology, if you could go to the next slide, please, has given us a specific methodology as to how those funds will go out the door. So it will be formula-driven and it is based on Title I as well as McKinney Vento data from 2018. And so there will be an allotment policy that's coming before you that will help you understand how that 75% is going to be distributed. So it will go out to the districts and they will be able to use it in accordance to regular McKinney Vento.
That's helpful, thank you. Are there additional questions or comments? All right, not seeing any. Thank you so much for this report, extremely valuable to all of us. With 35,000 students in this situation, and our last time we had data before the pandemic, we know this is going to be much worse. And so we really do need to put this kind of attention and focus on these children and the services needed by them, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
We now move to the John Kiefer portion of our program with BizOp 4, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, which is for ESER 3. And this involves allocating financial business and technology resources according to state federal laws. Mr. Kiefer?
Thank you, good morning, Vice Chair Duncan, your report. As Dr. Townsend just presented, we do have a second ARP ESER 3 homeless grant program. This, I think she talked through kind of the origin of it quite a bit, so I'll just focus on the formula. Unlike the standard McKinney Vento grant in the ARP homeless 1 program, this program does have a formula that distributes the grant funds based on 50%, 50% of the funding is distributed based on the relative proportion of Title I funds received by each public school unit in the state. That mirrors the ESER funding formulas that we are so well accustomed to at this point. And then the second 50% is distributed based on the relative number of students identified as experiencing homelessness within each eligible public school unit, against the total number of children identified across the state, using whichever year between school year 2018-2019 or 2019-2020 is most favorable to the, to each of the public school units. This, the use of the formula, it is important to note that the use of a formula to distribute these funds does eliminate the 50-student minimum eligibility criteria. So a lot of public school units that previously would not have been eligible to receive funds independently will be able to receive funding under the ESER 3 homeless 2, ARP ESER 3 homeless 2 program. However, there is a minimum grant award amount of $5,000, although any public school unit that has an allotment that does not reach $5,000 is eligible to form a consortium with other public school units to receive funds and administer the program. And these funds will be available through September 30th, 2024, which is the same timeline as the other ESER 3 funds.
Thank you, John. Are there questions or comments about this allocation process on the funds that we have, additional funds we have coming from ESER 3 for these students? All right, not hearing any, thank you very much, and you remain for BizOp 5 and 6, I believe, too.
Yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
So roll on.
All right, our next item is for the ESER 3 public school unit supplemental funding. Under North Carolina Session Law 2021-25, the General Assembly appropriated $20 million from the state's ESER 3 10% state reserve to make supplemental allotments to all public school units within the state to ensure that all public school units receive at least $400 per ADM. This is similar to the public school unit supplemental allotments that were authorized by the State Board as part of the 10% set aside for the ESER 1 fund and by the General Assembly as the, from the 10% set aside from the ESER 2 funds. The funding can be used for all the same purposes as the standard ESER 3 funds, has the same period of availability through the end of September 2024. And it will be, the public school units who are initially receiving funding will have to submit an application as they did with the other supplemental allotments for ESER 1 and ESER 2.
All right, thank you. Couple of questions for clarity on this one. For the ESER 1 funds, when those distributions were made by the board, that was pursuant to a section that was put into the federal granting of the funds, correct?
No, that was at the discretion of the State Board. The Department of Education has encouraged states to consider using a portion of its set aside for school districts, charter schools, and other units that either did not, well, did not receive the ESER 1, ESER 2, or ESER 3 funds because they were either ineligible for Title I or because they waived receiving Title I funds. I think the perception was, you know, they made that choice without knowing that that was going to be the basis for the distribution of all this pandemic funding.
So that was encouragement but not required?
But not required, yes. This is something that the state of North Carolina has elected to do, again, in recognition of the fact that these public school units still have extraordinary costs in the face of the pandemic.
Was there, again, encouragement but not requirement in the federal legislation for ESER 3?
So it was, the encouragement was provided through guidance, it was not part of the legislation or even regulations. This was more outreach that the U.S. Department of Education did to states that were receiving ESER 1, 2, and 3 funds to encourage them to use funds as well.
And when you say states, specifically the legislature passed a bill to use $20 billion of that funding, correct?
In North Carolina, correct?
Yes. And that was part of the $160 million roughly reserve that was the 5, was the 10%?
300, for ESER 3, it would have been 10% to 360 million.
Right. So that was, that election was made, not by the board, but by, actually, the bill passed by the legislature. And so at this point, we're not carrying out so much the federal reserve distribution, but we're carrying out what the law was passed by the legislature.
That's correct.
Thank you. These things get confusing, so thank you for that clarity.
No, that's okay.
Any other questions or comments on this? All right, not hearing any. Please keep going, John.
So the final item that school business is presenting for your consideration is an allotment, another allotment policy update. This is for the small rural schools achievement program flexibility. Under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, school districts and charter schools that meet the statutory definition of being a small rural school district are eligible to leverage flexibility in the use of their Title II Part A and Title IV Part A funds. They are permitted under the ESEA to use those funds for essentially allowable costs under several other ESEA programs, including Title I Part A, Title III Part A, which is English language acquisition grants, and Title IV Part A, which is the student support and academic achievement program. And so historically, we had utilized PRC 91 to allot the Title II Part A and Title IV Part A funds for each of the school districts that meets the statutory criteria as defined and approved by the U.S. Department of Education. However, this past spring, they, during conversations with the team that administers these funds at the department, they indicated that they would prefer that we adopt an accounting method that would separate out the Title II Part A funds from the Title IV Part A funds. And so we are now transitioning to use PRC 91 as the SRSA flexibility PRC for Title II Part A, and we will be using PRC 116 as the SRSA flexibility for the Title IV Part A funds. And so this is really just, these are really just holding PRCs that allow us to use an expanded chart of accounts to give the school districts that qualify greater flexibility in the use of these grant funds.
So in short, this is an important modification to the setting up of the funding.
Correct, correct. It's just, it's a cleaner way to account for the funds for the school districts for audit purposes and other reasons. We were not, the federal, our federal colleagues were very clear that we were not out of compliance with any requirements, but that they felt that it would be simpler and cleaner for our school districts to separate out the funding when we do the allotments for flexibility purposes.
Very good, thank you for that work. Are there questions or comments on this item? All right, not hearing any. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Thank you.
We go on to BizOp 7, and we have the impressive duo of Dr. Michael Maher and Dr. Janet Townsend-Smith to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, welcome.
Thanks for having us here. So we are proposing the establishment of a Committee of Practitioners for the American Rescue Plan. So as you know, we presented a couple of times on the American Rescue Plan template that we, required by the U.S. Department of Education. We were asked, as part of our resubmission to the department, to consult with a number of stakeholder groups. And then the expectation going forward is that we would continue to provide, U.S. Department of Education, with updates after our ESER 3 state agency reserve is appropriated by the General Assembly. And part of that update is how we will regularly engage with these, with this group of stakeholders. And so the establishment of this Committee of Practitioners would allow us to do that in a regular process. So the duties of this, of this commission, I'm sorry, can you go back, can you go forward? I've covered all this already. I'm trying to talk, talk quickly, speak quickly, right? Vice Chair Duncan likes us to move through. So to advise us in carrying out our responsibilities under ARP. And then the intention is that as we develop programs or spending policies, we'd have a body with whom we could share those policies before we bring them to the State Board for approval.
And so after consultation internally and externally, and as Dr. Maher has already outlined, the feedback that we received from the American Rescue Plan was to include specific groups. So we have included those particular groups. So the membership of this group will be 29 members, including those groups, but what we also added was membership from charter schools and from CAC. And like I stated, we did receive feedback on this policy internally and externally, and we all worked together to formulate the membership of this group. And so that's the proposed plan for membership for the, for this Committee of Practitioners. And as you know, with all of our federal programs primarily, we do form such committees to help solicit appropriate feedback so that the plans are informed appropriately. Are there any questions?
Yeah, questions or comments for this policy, which helps set up adherence with the federal regulations and statutes? All right, not hearing any, thank you very much, and we look forward to having strong members on this committee to help guide us through this process. All right, we now move on to BizOp 7, excuse me, BizOp 8, an anxiously anticipated report on a regular basis. This is the five-year facility needs survey report, and we have Dr., I'm sorry, I mean, Nathan Mon, and I did not mean to confer a free doctor on you. But Nathan Mon is here to help guide us through this, and thank you for the work you've done on it.
You're welcome, and thank you for the opportunity to present, Superintendent Truitt, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, and members of the board. This is an important report that we see once every five years, and I look forward to sharing some highlights with you and summarizing what's in the report that's in your materials. As students return to school in recent weeks, they return to campuses numbering in excess of 2,500 school campuses, a total of over 6,000 individual buildings, and well in excess of 5,000 mobile or modular classroom or multi-use buildings on those campuses. So this report, again, will assess in self-reporting terms from those districts, the facility needs that they recognize and that they're planning. General Statute 115C requires that once every five years, districts, local boards of education report to the State Board their long-range plans for facilities on their campuses. That's a statutory requirement, it's been in place over 30 years, and this is the latest installment of that, so I'll talk a little bit about the process for those who may not be familiar with how the data is collected, and then summarize a few of the findings from that report. So the process is one that school planning has conducted every five years for, again, 25 or 30 years. We conduct a facility needs survey, and it's a database that's compiled from a number of sources of information, historical and data from within DPI. Districts will self-report that data based on renovations, additions, and building systems that they plan at their existing facilities, as well as new school facilities that they have a need for and are planning in the near future. And it's broken into five-year needs and 10-year needs, and the real focus and the requirement in statute is for the five-year period of time. That reporting is key. And so that's the focus of the report that summarizes the details as well as this presentation. Once that's submitted by all 115 LEAs to school planning, then we compile the data and can draw that out of the database for the reporting that we're doing now. So again, the database platform includes listings of all existing schools by district, as well as current ADMs reported. Those ADM figures are pre-pandemic, as this database was developed in 2019, late 2019 and early 2020. and early 2020. So we use the latest data available at the time prior to the onset of the pandemic. There are K-12 space programming standards that are part of this. Classroom capacities, depending on type and use of facilities, those are in data tables that add to the calculations. Construction cost data is included based on national information, as well as North Carolina reporting. There are various factors, multipliers, if you will, that are applied to that within the calculations that are done in the database. And those recognize differences between standard general classroom space, for example, which might be a .9 or .95 factor, to things like gymnasiums and auditoriums, science laboratories that range, you know, the factor there might be 1.2 to 1.5, those sorts of numbers. And again, that, that helps take a baseline cost and translate it into the spaces that are envisioned in the planning of each district. Next slide. The costs that are in this database are pre-pandemic in nature. $250 a square foot is what our information has shown in the years leading up to this survey, most recent average of actual construction costs, bid results in North Carolina. It's not every school that was bid, certainly, but it's, it's that plus consulting with contractors and industry and construction experts, as well as other data analysis that we receive from national and trade organizations. And you can see that that compares to $194 a square foot as a baseline figure in the 2015 survey, $138 a foot 10 years ago. So that's, again, pre-pandemic per square foot baseline data does not take into account construction inflation volatility and supply chain issues that we're all familiar with over the last year and a half. Next. So just summarily, the needs identified, the aggregate data shows a $12.8 billion facility need planned, identified, and reported in the years 21 to 25, the next five years, the first five years of this survey. An additional $8 billion plus in years 6 through 10 was actually reported in this survey by district. So it's a significant need for facility improvements, renovations, additions, and new schools. And you can see how that breaks down. There are other tables in the report itself that disaggregate the data differently, but this compares each category, each broad category, from the 2015 survey to the 2020 survey, and kind of, you know, the percentage of increase in each. And you might see that, that large change in renovation figure. Renovations were, were planned, are planned, at over 1,500 school facilities. And I was checking, and that actually correlates very closely to the number of schools in North Carolina that are now over 25 years old. And so in those facilities, those buildings are likely experiencing breakdowns in building systems and, and systems in those buildings that are reaching the end of their, of their planned life cycle, if you will. And so I find that interesting. It's within, it's fewer than 100, the difference between schools reported to be 25 years old or older, and the number of schools identified as needing renovations. Very close. Next. So again, a few highlights from, from the figures themselves. 131 new schools reported as planned in this report, and those facilities would house 111,000 students, and some of them would replace existing schools. There are 83 schools reported as planned for replacement or demolition, and not every one of those would be replaced one-to-one. Some of those would be consolidated or combined into a new, a new campus in that district. Additions are planned at 312 schools, the bulk of that work being classroom space. There are nearly 100 gymnasiums, nearly 60 cafeterias, and 39 media centers that are planned across these districts. And again, there's 1,594 schools where renovations are identified. There's an opportunity for districts to characterize the reasons or the justification, if you will, for, for each project that's planned, and far and away repairs and deferred maintenance are the, are the key reason, the majority reason for the, for the work that's planned. Building code and life safety is also a big component. It's about a fifth of projects were tagged with that, with that need, and obsolete facilities and HVAC and energy savings are a couple of other victims. Enrollment growth is, is part of the picture, but it's not, it's not as prevalent as it has been, you know, say 20 years ago, when we were seeing very large year-over-year increases in the world. Some recent funding that I want to mention that's also included in a couple of the appendices in the report, the state education lottery funding for capital projects is, is distributed in a couple of, a couple of ways. The per ADM annual lottery fund is $100 million a year, so over the last five-year period, which is what this number represents, so it's $500 million. In 2017, the General Assembly created the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund, which is a lottery grant program that has been in place now for four cycles. And once we have a budget, we'll know where, how to proceed with the fifth year of that program. But in those four years since 2017, 359 million in grants have been awarded from those lottery funds. We do hear, we do expect that due to lottery revenue levels last fiscal year, that this year could possibly exceed $200 million available in the 21, 22 cycle of that program, but that's not, not confirmed yet. So it is growing. And then the local bond referendum, since 2016, 17 different counties have, have approved school bonds for construction. No, no referendum have, have, have been defeated on any of the ballots, so all 17 that were put before voters were passed, and that's 3.4 billion across those 17 counties. So all of that added together is about a third, about 33% of the five-year needs that are, that are identified in this report, just by way of comparison. And be happy to take any questions or try to highlight anything that I haven't yet.
Are there questions or comments from Michael? Yes.
I just have, I just have a clarification question. And I apologize, Nathan. You said on that last slide, those three pieces together constitute 33% of the current need as indicated in the five-year survey.
That's right. If, if you combine the two lottery funds with the local bonds, that's about 4.4 billion, 4.25 billion, sorry. And, and that into 12.7, 12.8 is right out of third.
Thank you.
Could we get a little more clarity on that? Because it's my understanding the reports were made 2021 year. So to the extent those lottery funds were distributed starting in 15 or 16 on an annual basis, and bonds were passed, a lot of those, a lot of that money's already been spent and/or planned for or encumbered. So is that really a true picture, that it's just, that, that 12 billion's already paid for in part, or is that just 12 billion in addition to some of these other funds?
No, it's, districts are asked not to report projects that are under construction or have funding in place. They're asked to identify new needs that are, that are planned but not, not funded, not under construction. And so that's just a tool, an illustration of what might be expected over the coming five years, the 21 to 26-year period, first five years of reporting in this report. It's not, it's not meant to, I hope it's not confusing, that it, that it should be deducted from that 12.7.
So let me say it this way, tell me if this is correct, that it was about a little, maybe close to four and a half million, between four and four and a half million dollars of money between bonds and the lottery funding that's distributed between 15 and 16, which does not count for this 2021 report because they're already in planning or encumbered or spent.
Right. That's correct.
So with that money spent, there was still an increase from eight million in needs to 12 million in needs. So had that money not been there, would have been, excuse me, billion, would have been 17 billion in needs from eight billion, had that money not been there.
I don't know that I can extrapolate that directly, but the request and the instructions given to each district were to only report needs that were not funded and not under construction.
Right. I've been just trying to get your arms around the entirety of the issue, and the fact that rocketing construction costs going up are part of that issue. It, it's, it's not fair to then say the increase is only from eight to 12 billion when a great deal of money's been spent in, in or encumbered for these needs that do not count towards this 12 billion. Correct?
Right. I agree.
Okay. That's helpful. It is hard to, hard to understand, so that's very helpful. Are there other questions or comments? Yes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. I just have a question, and kind of coming from the field, listening to the report, seeing the data and about the construction needs, and this might be a question for somebody else, but I'm wondering, how does this report, you know, we know this data, we have it, how does that help? How does that help us? How does it help schools? How does that make, is it part of decision-making, knowing this information? And I say that because I'm in a, in a building that's just had a 50th year anniversary with a lot of needs, and so just curious how this translates to other things that we do or make decisions about.
You want to take a crack at that?
I'll take a crack at it. I, you know, really love visiting schools and seeing the students, the kids, the staff, the teachers, administrators, and, and I see the facilities too. When we, when we go, when School Planning visits these facilities, we don't do it as often as we'd like, but when we're out, we recognize those needs when we see with our eyes as architecture engineers. So we know, we feel kind of at the gut level that this is the, the greatest pain, if you will, that's being reported. It's the most urgent needs, most critical, top-of-the-list priority, and that's important, as it should be. Those are the ones that should be addressed first. But we know that there's more than this, and we, we believe that that's the case in almost every district. There were five districts in this report, which is low in recent cycles, that reported zero cost of needs, five of the 115. So we don't feel like that's accurate, and we, but we don't know the reasons why, but that's just, you know, something to note. We feel like districts report what's most critical and most urgent. There was a Program Evaluation Division study from the General Assembly, I think in 2016, '27 timeframe, so just after the 2015 facility need survey. And by design, that looked at nine, at districts in nine counties. And I've looked, those are 93 school campuses that were, were included in that survey, and it was a very detailed third-party consultant who performed this survey for the General Assembly. They spent many months doing it and visiting every building on every facility, and they came to a conclusion that of those 93 schools, they identified, using a very methodical, more or less scientific approach, $670 million in needs. Those same districts had reported in the 2015 survey to DPI, to the State Board, I better get it right, a lower number, $287 million, as opposed to 630, in those same 93 school facilities. That's fewer than 100 out of 2,500 campuses. So if that's any indication, the difference between what's self-reported and what's really out there is, is very large, is very significant.
Any other questions or comments?
Vice Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
We all know that facility needs are important, but I'd like to contextualize it against teaching and learning as a practitioner. So I could spend all day, every day working on facility needs in my school building, and that in turn impacts kids and teachers, right? Because I am diverting so much time and energy to old facility needs, that takes time away from focusing on teaching and learning. And the same is true with the teacher in the classroom, right? That they've got to focus on facility needs in that classroom, and they could be spending more time on teaching and learning. So just, we all know that this is a need, but I really want to highlight that through a practitioner's lens. It is taking time away from teaching and learning when we have to focus so much time on aging facility needs.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I do have one.
Please, Ms. Campbell.
So it's obvious, looking at these figures, that the lottery, the lottery funds and grants are not sufficient unless a district saves money over a period of years to afford the cost of a replacement school or a new school. Is that correct?
I would say that some districts receive, well, first of all, the, if you could back up Dr. Townsend, no, back to the, yeah, this one would be fine, sorry. The Public School Building Capital Fund, which is the 100 million per year that's allotted per student, per ADM across the state in 115 districts, you know, that, all you have to do is do the math. If you're a very small rural district, that's roughly $68 or $70 per student is not going to go very far to renovate a building. So you do have to accumulate that and save it over time. Larger districts that have active construction programs and perhaps hundreds of campuses in their county and tens of thousands of students, they get a larger share of that fund. But again, it alone will not do a project. It contributes to renovation funding and so forth. So each district and each county has decided how best to utilize those resources that they have, year in and year out. The Needs-Based Lottery Fund is designed, is intended to address critical needs, and the language in the, in the session law, 2017-57, states the intent of the General Assembly to, to address those needs, and it's primarily, certainly currently, available to Tier 1 and Tier 2 economic areas as defined by the State Department of Commerce. The criteria for that program may change in bills that are under consideration in the legislature right now. But again, that is intended to address a need that's identified, an application that's made by the district and county jointly, and hopefully with a local match component, completely fund a project, and we've seen several successful instances of that. That program has awarded 37 different grants in the four years to projects within 30 counties. So again, it's a start, and we're glad that it's growing, and we hope to see that fund continue to go, to grow. It's addressing critical needs in some of the, the neediest districts in the state.
A couple, a couple of follow-up questions, if I could, quickly?
Please.
So I think I heard you say that those lottery grants require a matching, some matching funding?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And then finally, just a quick question, and I, you sort of alluded to this, but my understanding is that, that there is a huge difference in districts in terms of the capacity to, to access bond, bond money through a referendum. First, you have to pass the referendum, but you have to have some financial ability to borrow the money. So is there a difference in who, in counties, in counties' access to that as a source of funds? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, the decision to put a referendum before the voters, of course, is a local matter, local county-level decision, and cooperation, consultation with the local school boards. And so that, that's a local funding decision and planning effort, and that's a, that is the way school facilities are funded in North Carolina, with the exception of these state funds. And another example is the 1996 statewide school bond for K-12 facilities. Other than those items, it's a local funding matter, and local priorities enter into those decisions.
Yeah, as, as does the ability to. As, as does the ability to, to have a successful referendum. I'm sure there are a lot of counties that would have a hard time doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. I'd like to thank Mr. Mullin for this, this information. This really from the local district perspective, it helps us, it helps local boards of education to have this information to complement what we already have from our individual district-specific five-year studies, to provide some state-level context for the decisions that we're making about our facilities. But just to, to enhance the question Ms. Camus had about lottery funds, we get this question a lot and, and there's a lot of confusion about that. But just from a local district perspective, especially a small rural district, I'll say our case is similar to many districts that I've checked with around the state, that all of their lottery funds are allocated to, for the purpose of retiring existing bond debt. And this is a scenario that you see repeated in district after district after district. And there's a lot, there's a lack of clarity among the stakeholders internal and external about that. So, and that's neither is good nor bad, it's just the reality of how it is. And it, and, and certainly if we're not looking at it from a hindsight perspective, we would have done the same thing because we didn't have any other options to build new schools. But in our district, for instance, we have 12 and 13 years remaining on two existing bonds.
I think that's commonplace around the state, as you observe.
Yes. And school planning administers those, those funds and then processes the requests from districts on a monthly basis. And our figures show that about 80% of the Public School Building Capital Fund, those lottery per ADM funds, go to debt service. And that's permitted in the statute. It's, it is construction dollars. It's just that you need to build, you need to have all the money when you build a facility. And this, this money comes in over time, so it is often used.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, please.
I have a quick question. Um, I know, I just wanted to know, as districts prepare this material for, prepare their five-year plan, are there lines included in case things happen like flooding? Or, you know, are those things included? I mean, I just did a visit in a county where they did lose a school and there are children that are now learning virtually because that school building is not, they are not able to be there. So do they have, is that included in their plan? Do they have to include that as an option?
It's, it's not a line item or a category of planning, if you will, in the survey.
I mean, that does happen within our state. I think we might need to consider that.
There's a chance, I would say, that some of the 131 schools planned as new construction might be replacements for those that were affected by disasters, but it was not, that's not one of the criteria that was listed in the surveys.
And I'm definitely sure they've included some of those in their repairs, right? I'm just thinking about just getting children back in the building. And is there an emergency kind of line in there?
Any other questions or comments? Let me ask one thing. Have you gathered from the data what the average age of a school is in North Carolina? We've heard several references to that, but any questions or comments that you?
I don't have an average from this data, but I know that, that we can provide you information, the numbers of facilities in, you know, 25 to 50 years old, 50 to 75 and older than 75. We do have schools still in operation that are 100 years old, not very many, but they're out there. And, and that's not necessarily that thing, but each, each of those eras presents challenges when you're talking about renovating a facility for code compliance, life safety, you know, campus security, all of the many factors that, that have to be considered, so.
If you have that data, you can give it to Dr. Townsend Smith so board members can get it. I know we hear frequently from, from many LEAs that their average building is in excess of 50 years of age. And so that's something that we hear a lot. It would be good to try to get some factual data from you on that, that'd be much appreciated.
Be happy to do it.
Thank you. Thank you for the report.
Thank you for the time.
Our next item is BizOP 9, which I believe Dr. Harvey is going to present. And this is about the SBE Policy Amendment for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, SRR 3 for the nutrition program for allocations.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair Duncan. It's, it's a pleasure to be part of the dream today. I think we're halfway through that dream environment you mentioned earlier. This proposed allotment directs the use of $10 million in SRR 2 funds to provide COVID support to our local school nutrition programs. The funds would be available to those PSUs who are approved to administer a federally-funded school nutrition program at the local level. Those programs would include the school breakfast program, the school lunch program, and the seamless summer option, which is the program under which we are currently operating predominantly, as this program gives us maximum flexibility under the federal waivers. As you've perhaps heard, staffing shortages in the school nutrition programs in the PSUs are a serious problem. Some PSUs are reporting shortages of 20% to 25%. This, of course, directly impacts the ability of our PSUs to provide meals to all students because meals are available to all students at no cost while still providing meals to those virtual learners and others who are in the community. So we propose the use of these funds to be directed toward recruitment and retention bonuses for school nutrition programs. We believe, based on feedback from those we serve, this incentive would help to address this problem. Now, the allotment would be based upon the PSU's ADM, less any unexpended CRF funds that remain from prior issuances. That's, of course, the direction that is provided to us in the statute. Of course, each PSU would be required to complete an application for this purpose. And as part of the application, PSUs would be required to describe their plan for administering these funds in accordance with the, the policy and as well in accordance with local board policy relative to compensation bonuses.
Any questions or comments? All right, not hearing any. I want to thank Dr. Harvey and her colleagues and thank all our nutrition workers around the state and how valued they are for the work that's continued to go on to help make sure that the nutritional needs of our students are met even when they're not in school. So thank you. Thank you for the efforts that have been ongoing and the amount of time it's gone into.
I look forward to sharing that with them because in addition to staffing shortages, we are experiencing significant supply chain issues, which makes the operation, I see heads shaking around the table, those of you who experience every day, but the menu's going to look a little different. So we're asking for grace among our families and communities as those changes are there. Our school nutrition heroes, as I will call them, are working nonstop to make sure the needs of all students are addressed in this period of time. So thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. And you work it nonstop because the challenges are nonstop, they just have been. So our next item is BizOP 10. And with both BizOP 10 and 11, I think it's Ms. Lynn Barber and Dr. Maher who are presenting these items. And so I will just let them go ahead and make the presentation and may have, I suspect we could have a couple of questions at the end.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, and members of the Board for the opportunity to present two new programs from the Office of Learning Recovery. So to address the lost instructional time due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the North Carolina General Assembly appropriated $40 million to be held in reserve specifically for PRC 176. So this spring, I had the privilege of reading, reviewing, and approving all 115 LEA school extension program proposals, as well as 44 charter school program proposals. Of those 159 proposals, there were 13 LEAs that specifically outlined summer bridge or jumpstart programs within their plans. Additionally, Dr. Maher and I visited over 25 programs this summer and we were able to see acceleration-style programs in action. The students had lots of smiles, they were excited to be there, to once again socially engage and prepare specifically for the upcoming school year. On July 20th, our office held a virtual summer bridge jumpstart focus group with those 13 identified LEAs, as well as additional ones we viewed in the field, to discuss the why, how, and what's next for summer bridge programs. This valuable feedback, in addition to input from the regional directors and visits and insight from the district visits and voices team, our office was able to shape this program I have before you today, PRC 176, the Summer Bridge Program. So this appropriation will be used to develop in-person K-12 summer bridge programs for students disproportionately. Programs shall have a minimum of 50 hours of on-grade level instruction that are 25 hours of that. And then the other 25, we're hoping will be partnerships with nonprofits or internal enrichment programs, et cetera, project-based learning. There will be a CCIP application in, in your board materials. There's also the guidance document that outlines what will be in the Qualtric Survey, which is our request for their specific program plan for the summer bridge programs. This will be open to all PSUs, grades K-12. So I'm happy to move on to BizOP 11, which is 177, but I will pause.
Why don't you do both and then we'll come back for questions and comments, since they are related.
Yep, happy to do so. So this one is similar to PRC 176 in that, I believe, one moment, please. To address a lost time due to COVID-19, the General Assembly appropriated a little over $26 million for in-person instruction during the summer months. So similarly to our research with the, the program proposals, our site visits, we also saw exciting opportunities for students during the summer. So during the visits, many students stated to the regional directors, to Dr. Maher and myself, that they would not have had many of the opportunities during the academic year that they had during the school extension program. Some of those opportunities included hands-on robotics, engineering, even aviation flight lessons without the school's kitchen program. So many schools are even hoping to increase enrollment in specific classes, and some have applied for grants to continue some of those beta programs into the fall and spring semesters, which is really exciting that these students had those opportunities that they maybe would not have had. So what Dr. Maher and I did, similar input that went into PRC 176, but in addition, we met with agency peers, Kristy Van Oken, who's a special assistant for workforce, to Superintendent Truitt, as well as Trey Michael, Director of CTE, to design a summer program that supports workforce-aligned summer accelerations for students specifically grade 12. And so our goal overall was to create funding opportunities for programs that continue the great work of the teachers and students this summer, meaningful programs that can be measured, that will prepare and accelerate our students for the next school year. So again, as I mentioned, both programs will have an application in CCIP. And in addition, I'd like to state, we are coming for you for an action on first read because one of the feedback that we received while in the field is a blocker of time. And while no one in this body had any control over when House Bill 82 was signed and when we implemented that, we do have control over when we can launch these programs to give ample planning time to the teachers and staff and administrators in the field. In addition to that, we are going to do optional learning cohorts for those PSUs who would like to participate in both of these programs, 176 and 177, can come together to share best practices, ideas, lessons learned from previous years, and perhaps collaborate with some partnerships for the future summers, whether it's '22 or '23. And with that, I would like to be brief. Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Maher and I are happy to answer any questions.
All right. So one point of clarification, we've been trying to keep straight these funding sources as we've gone through the various items.
Yes, sir.
The one Dr. Harvey just did is an SRR 2 funding issue, as are these two items. They are SRR 2 funds.
Correct. These are SRR 2 funds.
Yes.
Yes.
Earlier, we've been talking about several items that were SRR 3 funds, and I think it's important to try to continue to, to distinguish that. So thank you for giving that moment to do that. So with that, are there any questions or comments with respect to these items? All right. Not hearing any, I'm going to ask a couple.
Oh, yes, sir.
And you've heard it before. So the, as you said, the timing and how much planning could go into last summer's summer program was limited by the timing of when the legislation was passed. That was beyond the Board's control. And, and everyone tried to work in good faith and put the best programs together they could under the circumstances. You, I think you know, Dr. Barber, the Board had asked for some feedback about the summer programs, and I think you've given oral reports. I know Dr. Maher's given an oral report about what he went out and observed with you in the field. But we don't really have any data, as I understand it. We're not going to be ready to report on data for, probably not before November at the earliest, as I understand it, maybe even December.
That is correct. The, the required data for the school extension program is due October 30th. So that would really kind of decrease the time in terms of turnaround for the programs, with us receiving and then reviewing the data.
So I want to highlight for the Board the difficult position you're in. You all have done your best. You've gone out, looked at programs in action, and tried to assess what you think, what you think looked to be the most effective, as best you could assess it on, at the time you were there. But in the ideal world, we want to have data-driven programs where we know there's successful results. The long-term on summer schools, there's a lot of data that says, yes, summer school doesn't move the dollar the way we want it to. But you're looking at the most promising practices, which is you can best assess them. But I think everybody should recognize, to some degree, you're flying blind. You don't have the data that you would normally like to have. But you, or were able to observe things in person, and that is helpful in terms of this. So the Board's sort of in a position of, of going forward with a plan, not yet having the data, you not yet having the data of what may have worked. And so it's a little bit of a, this is a little bit of an uncomfortable dance for everybody in the room, I think, because I think in our, we have our superintendents here who can support the notion, they need time to set up a quality program. So you might want to comment on that because of what you've had to deal with and what the Board now looks at from a policy standpoint.
Sure. I, I think there are two, two important points to make. So the first is that while the Career Accelerator Program, the, the data will be different that comes in after this program, right? Because we're really looking at the kinds of workforce credentials that a student had the opportunity to earn and perhaps did earn over that program. And we will hopefully have that data later this year. But going forward, right, this becomes part of an iterative process of designing, delivering programs, collecting data, and then refining those programs for a second implementation. And what I hope that you will see is that over time, the Office of Learning Recovery will use this model again and again, where we create a program, we evaluate its effectiveness, we find what works, we turn around and we redesign that program so that we are continually improving it from year to year for the next three or four years, as long as we have funding. I think the other important, important point to note is this idea of Bridge Academies isn't something that we just invented, that there is actually data around some of these programs. They're pretty popular. They're actually really popular in the, in the higher education space where they take students who need kind of remedial work to get ready for college. And so there's, there's tons of data from, from the higher education community where that works for rising freshmen into the university. But we also saw some examples of bridge work happening across the country. So Tulsa Schools actually did a program that was, that was pretty effective. But what we're looking to do is actually on a state level, which is a very different approach, could be much more robust in terms of the data we're able to, to draw from these programs. But I think you're absolutely right. We're, we're a little bit under the gun in terms of when we have to make these PRCs available before this money gets kind of swept out. So we can't wait until we have all of the data. So we're actually trying to make decisions based on the best available data. And I think that's what we'll have to do for the time being.
So last question. Once the programs have been designed and applications have been made to move forward, and you get data that's going to likely follow some of that, will, will there be an opportunity and still be consistent with the grant of the money to make some modifications based on data feedback you receive while the planning is going on in the spring?
Yes, so the, the program plan is, is due at the end of December, or we're, we're hoping that if approved, it will be due the end of December. And there certainly is, that's part of the learning cohorts, is to provide that flexibility and grace to the PSUs to be able to, to review the data from the school extension and modify based on what's best for the student and the student outcomes, absolutely. And there will be an evaluation at the end of that, in the learning cohorts.
Once submitted, can there still be some modification?
Absolutely.
Even after December 31st?
Yep. Yes, sir.
And I understand there's a December 31st deadline for good reason in terms of time.
Correct. Yep.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Austin.
Thank you very much. My question has to do with, we're talking about data collection. What type of data are you contemplating collecting? Have you designed some kind of data instrument or are you?
For this particular, for these particular programs? So what we've asked districts is to identify the kind So what we've asked districts is to identify the kinds of data that they, so really, this is about individual districts identifying the kinds of objectives and outcomes that they are deeming important for these programs. So I think we will certainly be interested in track, so can I take one step back and give you kind of a little, a little bit of a broader picture? So one of the things that we're trying to do is establish an overarching research agenda around all of our programs. And so when we think about this, I try not to think necessarily in terms of one individual program, but rather a suite of programs that are delivered. We have the opportunity here to identify students who participate in each of the different programs, and then track their performance over time. So we have the list of students who participated in school extension, we'll be able to follow those same students, should they participate next summer in either of these programs. My office recently submitted a three-year longitudinal IES grant, which will do robust quantitative data collection, including all of the different measures that we have available to us. So this program would certainly be part of that. So in addition to the quantitative data that we collect, which may be things like credits earned over the course of this summer program, it could be everything from that to new credits earned, credits recovered, it really will depend a lot on the district. We're trying not to tie the hands of districts in telling them exactly what we want them to do, because I think our best opportunity right now is to discover what districts are doing really well and draw on that. We don't have all the answers, we're a small team, and even if I had a larger team, I still wouldn't have all of the answers. The answers are in the district, and so we need to find out as much as we can from them. In addition to our quantitative data that we're collecting, you're gonna have a BizOP item that comes up a little later, Dr. Corn and I have proposed qualitative grants, so that we can also do qualitative study on these programs, so we can wrap that around the numbers data, draw a bigger picture about what we're seeing from these programs.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much for the work that you're doing and for this report.
Thank you.
We now move to BizOP 12, and I think Dr. Maher, you stay with us for this item?
Yes, sir.
So let me just let you proceed on this policy amendment.
Yeah, so this is PRC 178. It's one that came to you earlier this year, it was the competency-based assessment associated with the school extension program. All we're asking for is an extension of the date to September 30th, so it was originally, it had an August deadline. This will allow a handful of districts that remain an opportunity to apply for and receive the remaining funds.
Any questions on this? Very good, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
We now move to BizOP 13, which is an action item. I believe Kevin Harrison will be here to discuss it. It's the transportation technology considerations. We've had this as a discussion item at our last two meetings, and I think Kevin has about, he's on the two-minute drill for presentation of what the policy would change, and then any questions. But I think we've discussed this a lot and gotten a lot of information already.
Absolutely. So this is a revision to the policy, as we've discussed the past couple of meetings, the new policy elements are that it defines the implementation of the transportation information management system that is in legislation. It is defining that implementation as establishing routes in the transportation information management system, or something deemed equivalent by the State Board of Education. It highlights local discretion, that public school units can use any additional technologies that they wish, if they wish to have GPSs and cameras, and they wish to have a whole different routing system altogether, that they can absolutely do that. There's no problem with them doing that, as long as they continue with TIPS. And then it moves on to indicate what would need to be required for them to eliminate using the transportation information management system. And so, so it outlined, part of that is to outline equivalency, which is that the superintendent, a PSU superintendent, would request that we evaluate whatever system they have in place for equivalency, for the purposes of discontinuing use of the transportation information management system. And it indicates that whatever the new system is, must accept our standard student information system data format, and be adaptable to future changes to that format, that it must provide computer-assisted school bus routing, so that the computer can aid the district, it's not just a big map where you can put pins and strings on it, and that it must demonstrate that it can output the data that we expect, the standard data elements that we're currently receiving in the transportation, from the transportation information management system. And then, at such times as we determine that, DPI can make a recommendation to the State Board of Education, and if the State Board of Education approves the system in that district, then it can be approved, and they can discontinue use of TIPS at that time.
Very good.
Short of.
We reviewed this item a couple of times, and now we've got the detail about what the policy will look like, which has been out there for review. Are there any further questions on this? All right, not hearing, a lot of work has gone into this, and this is complex, and so I do want to extend our thanks to Kevin and his colleagues, and the kind of effort and work that's gone into this, and that will be continued in nature, once we adopt this policy, it will require substantial additional work, so thank you for that.
Certainly, happy to.
All right, our BizOP 14 is request to allocate unallocated elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, and we are back to S or 2, just for those keeping a score card. And I think Dr. Maher is back again. He may have a, at least introduce other people, if not have any of them speak, but
Yes, sir.
Given the time we're at, but some, a proposal about these funds that are available, because they're at this point unallocated.
Yes, sir. So this refers to the S or 2, the remaining funds that are in the state reserve, and so what we've done is, my office met with the deputy superintendents a couple of weeks ago, talked about which funds were remaining, and some of the priorities for both the superintendent's Operation Polaris, as well as some of the state board priorities, and how we could best allocate these funds. If I could get just a little bit of grace, I guess I want to go through these in an order that's a little bit different from what you see there, just because this will give an opportunity for individuals, since they're kind of packaged by individual.
Grace, great.
So the first item is the Portrait of a Graduate, which is a $200,000 item. This is Dr. Stigall's work, he's overseeing the Operation Polaris accountability work, and so this would allow us to create that portrait, would fund the creation of the graduate portrait. Secondly, there is a $500,000 request for Promising Practices, so this is my office. Dr. Corn and I would like to have four different grants, where we could contract with external researchers in four regions of the state. These individuals would do qualitative analysis of any of the programs that we have put out, including the school extension program this summer, and then the Career Accelerator, which we just presented, as well as the Bridge Program, and then potentially any other programs that we put forward. And so that would be the qualitative piece to go on with the quantitative data we've collected. There's a $2.3 million ask for instructional support and coaching, this is Dr. Emery's group, and this would ensure that we had funding for the coaches. Essentially, we are waiting on the S or 3 appropriation. We have asked for funding to continue the funding of these, we have asked for a portion of the S or 3 to be used to fund these positions, but in the time in which we do not currently have a budget, we worry a little bit about the sustainability of that, and so that's why we're asking to use that funding. And then there's another item for $150,000, instructional support and coaching. These would provide coaches similar to Dr. Emery's coaches for the agency schools, so this is Dr. Jordan's item. Number five, the Teach NC, we'd like, we are requesting $100,000 for a position to be able to staff the work of the Teach NC group, which is teacher recruitment, out of the Office of Educational Preparation. And then two final items, the UNC worldview and social-emotional learning profiles, $150,000, $175,000, those are Dr. Taylor's group. And so I could talk about the Promising Practice one some more, if you'd like, but if there are, if there are questions about any of these individual items, then I'd like to invite the owner of that item.
That makes sense. Are there questions or comments by board members on any of these items or advisors? Yes, Dr. Oxman.
Yes, just a quick question. Take me back to the point about the contracting out with researchers to conduct some studies. Will those, are you gonna bid out for those research entities?
Yes, ma'am, we'll do RFPs for those.
And they'll come to us?
Yes.
At some point?
Yes.
Sounds good, need you to know.
Other questions or comments? Ms. White.
So the instructional support and coaching piece, is that directed towards any, I mean, are we looking at letters, are we looking at supporting science of reading, is there any particular targeted area on that, and what type of entities would qualify as coaches? Are you looking at outside providers?
Thank you for the question. This is an extension of one year of the original 4.5 million that this board allocated to support our lowest performing districts and schools. So it is customized coaching. The district coaches are contracted. We have hired at some great hurdles here with short-term money, the school-based coaches, and our greatest concern here is that that expires 2022, and this would allow us to extend them another year into 2023, while we wait on S or 3. And as you know, it takes a while to get in and develop relationships, and that work is being predicated upon comprehensive needs assessments in alignment with the needs articulated by the district. So essentially, it's just a one-year extension of those original funds that you gave us last fall.
That helps, thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, I have really one, it covers a couple areas, but it's more focused on the budget. Some of these items, I'm using as an example, the Teach NC and development social, some school socio-emotional profiles, the board has made significant budgetary requests in both of those areas, in Teach NC and in the socio-emotional support area. Our, is this request contingent on the board's request from legislature for these budgetary items failing, or is it?
Yes, essentially, yes.
So if we do get those requests, which I think we made a very strong case for, I want to say, what then would not still be used for what we vote for here?
That's right, then we would have a conversation about what, how best to then allocate those remaining funds that were not a part of the budget.
Okay. Are there other items that fall in the category, as you look at this, that board requests as budgetary items that were, that are included in this requested allocation of these unallocated funds?
The instructional coaches were one of the requests we made from the S or 3 appropriation.
Which if the board retained some control over the S or 3 allocations, we could be comfortable with being made, if the board does not, and that's?
Yes. Yeah, I think the concern is, if the S or 3 were appropriated in the way that S or 2 was through House Bill 196, then we'd have very little flexibility in terms of that funding. However, if the funds are appropriated in a way different from House Bill 196, in the way in which we've asked it to be appropriated, we would have that flexibility.
And the S or 3 funds would go, for this particular item, would go more than one year, they would go for two more years, to 2024 at least, right?
Yes.
Okay. Superintendent Truitt, did you want to comment?
I'm just agreeing, I'm just nodding vigorously.
Yes, I caught the vig, I thought you might want to comment. Any other items, or those ones that you see based on?
I believe that's it.
The budgetary items, I think that's what I saw as well, but I want to make sure so. I just want the board to be aware, as we vote on this item, it's, with respect to those items, it's contingent on not getting our budgetary request, which we very strongly support in all of these areas, as a board to be out and making the request and continue to strongly support those requests. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, that brings us in on to BizOP 15 and 16, which are consent items. 15 is a report to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee by the State Board on Education Waivers of State Law Rules Granted to Local Education Agencies, that's an annual report, where it lists, among other things, start dates for all the schools as we go through the year. BizOP 16 is a report to the General Assembly, which is an annual required report, that I'm sure everyone will recall, on the state agency mobile devices usage. So that's a relatively brief report, but it's given annually. So those are the last of the numbered items. We may have a consent item, BizOP 17, but that will, that may appear tomorrow, but that's subject to further information obtained. With respect to the remaining items, we have then, we've got executed contracts report, I have not received any questions or comments about that, are there any? All right, not hearing any. Same with planned contracts report, I have not heard any comments or questions about any of those. Are there any? Not hearing anything, then we'll move on to the agency vacancy report, and I think Mr. Paxton has agreed to do a one-minute drill, just to update us on the process. As you will recall, there's a lot of work going on to hire some additional people to support the work of the agency, and a quick report from Mr. Paxton's.
Yeah, just the quick follow-up, and if we go to the very last slide, in the report, we looked at where we were with the positions that were approved for S or administration, and it's a moving target as we're continuing that process, and as we stand today, or as we stood yesterday, actually, we've got seven offers pending, we've got seven positions that we're actively hiring, four and seven that are still in recruiting, right? So we are making progress, we're getting some of those positions in, and feel very good about the seven offers that are out there. We're moving.
Yes.
Just wanted to give an update that things are moving along.
Thank you. So you want, that won't be as readily apparent in the actual hire, but there's a lot of work that's going on in terms of bringing in these positions, and they're important positions for us, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
That brings us finally to our monthly budget report, and I think we've agreed that we have gone long enough today that we would not spend time on the monthly budget report. Ms. Schaus, is there anything you should report with respect to the S or federal funding that we need to know that has not been already covered by the items?
No, I don't have anything else to report, except for we are eagerly waiting the budget and the S or directives.
That's, thank you. So, and that's truly understated well. So as soon as we get a budget, will be a lot of action, and we'll be getting a lot more input there, so we'll give everyone a rest. And with that, we bring it to a close, thank you for your patience, we did have an awful lot of items to review. Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. We'll now move to the Education, Innovation, and Charter Schools Committee, and I recognize Sammy White, Chair of that committee, Ms. White.
Good morning, Chair Davis. Thank you for the introduction. I share the responsibility of leading the Education, Innovation, and Charter School Committee with Ms. Jill Cammets. We are excited today to have a report from Rowan Salisbury School System. Rowan Salisbury is the only renewal school system in our state. So frequently, under this committee, you will have districts which submit a particular school to use the renewal program as a strategy to increase student achievement, and that's for one school only. But Rowan Salisbury made a decision several years ago to let the entire system be a renewal school system, and today, I'd like to welcome Dr. Tony Watlington, who, I think you started your job in January?
December, January, that's correct.
Okay, so nine months almost under his belt. Welcome, we are excited about having you join us today to give us this report, and hear about the good things going on in Rowan Salisbury.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. White, Chairman Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, and Superintendent Truitt. Excited to be here today to give you an update from North Carolina's first and only renewal school system. Many of you may know Rowan County for being the home of Food Lion and Cheer Wine, and a former state board chair, Mr. Phil Kirk. He would be remiss if I didn't mention that, for those of you who know Mr. Kirk. I'm also honored to be here, because I came from Guilford County, had the honor to work under Mr. Duncan as the chairman of the Board of Education for many years. I want to share with you, if you'll just follow along in the presentation, an overview of our renewal vision and the requirements, where we are, where we want to be, and our next steps. I want to be remiss if I didn't mention first, that we should really commend the the Rowan Salisbury Schools Board of Education and my predecessor, Dr. Lynn Moody, for having the vision to think about how we might do some things differently and to use charter-like flexibility to make significant improvement in a public school district. So with that, we'll move to the next slide about our renewal vision and requirements. I want to first share with you a little bit about our school district. We're just north of Charlotte, about 35, 40 miles north of Charlotte, 33 schools and 18,000 students. We are a district that receives low-wealth funding. And you'll find it interesting that this was the first school district in our state to not only become a renewal school district, but also to launch a large-scale K-12 Apple one-to-one initiative back in 2014 and certainly doing some pioneering work using technology. On the next slide, you will see a little bit about our vision in Rowan Salisbury Schools. As the, we're working hard to continue to figure out how we use all the renewal flexibilities that we had, the local board has, to build a local accountability model in addition to the state accountability model that helps us do four things. First, we're laser-focused on developing the whole child in three areas, academic skills, interpersonal skills, and unique life goals versus a singular focus on just one test score given on one day at one point in time. We think testing is very, very important. And so we also think that we want to be focused on educating the whole child. We're focused on increasing students who are enrolled, enlisted, or employed, enrolled in a two- or four-year institution after graduation, enlisted in the military, or not just employed, but are employed in good-paying jobs where the K-12 school district is an engine helping to attract those jobs to Rowan County. Third, to increase the percentage of schools that meet growth, meet or exceed growth. In fact, our expectation is that all of our schools will meet or exceed growth under the state accountability model and to decrease our low-performing schools, state-identified low-performing schools. On the next slide, you'll see, I'll call your attention to the reporting requirements. As you know, we're required to give this board an update on three areas, student outcomes, classroom teacher and school administrator vacancies, and student absences, as well as any other areas that the state superintendent might deem appropriate. And that's what we'll do today. On the next slide, you'll see when the General Assembly approved the renewal school districts, there were only two, there were two requirements that had to be met in order to continue as a renewal school district. And the only ways a district, our district would discontinue to be that renewal school district is if we fail to meet the requirements for student performance or if at any time during the course of our journey, a majority of the schools were identified as state-identified low-performing schools more than two years prior to the board's review. And we are certainly not going to let that happen. Just to give you some historic context, the House Bill 986, as you well know, was passed in law in 2018. The school district did some phenomenal work, really galvanizing teachers in the district to make sure that teacher voice was central at the table in addition to other voices as the district created design teams so that there could be a high level of ownership for what we do in classrooms every day on behalf of children. It's no secret that the pandemic has had an impact on the district. That notwithstanding, the district last fall received a Teacher and School Leadership Grant, a federal grant of $26 million, one of a handful of districts across the country to actually receive that grant to help to facilitate some of this work. And at present, we are currently working to refine our local accountability model. And we are in the process of developing a new district strategic plan. And so again, kudos to my predecessor Lynn Moody, who you'll see there in that picture. We are excited and we don't take lightly the flexibility that the local Board of Education in Rowan Salisbury has been provided in the areas of curriculum, budget, personnel, and calendar. I've been a teacher, a principal, a chief of schools, and worked in a lot of jobs in public education. And we've always said, those of us who came up through the traditional ranks, that there's this unfair playing field and we all like to have the same opportunity at school innovation. And so we've been working hard and the district has really focused in on, well, what do we do with these flexibilities in the area of curriculum, budget, personnel, and calendar? In alignment with the research, I will tell you that we've hired 86 teachers since we became a renewal district, giving the licensure flexibility. And we found some really, really star teachers that come from different walks of life. And that's been an important part of that personnel flexibility. In terms of budget, we've tried to encourage schools to think differently. In alignment with the research, what makes the difference in terms of how we spend our dollars? And certainly with calendar, we'll continue to work on those flexibilities. Each one of those areas set others to be determined because as we continue to learn and review our data annually, we will continue to adjust how we exercise those significant flexibilities. The slide in front of you is the renewal directional system that guides the local accountability model and the work being done for the past three years in Rowan Salisbury Schools. I want to highlight in the center of that, will you see engaged learners? Everything we do with those flexibilities are in service of how do we really actively engage all students? And we ask ourselves, how do we know students are really engaged? Because all of us from time to time can appear to be engaged and we're not, whether we're sitting at a board meeting or whether we're in a classroom. And so there are three buckets that drive this system, this renewal directional system. Academic skills is one area of focus. But as I told you earlier, the other two big areas of focus are interpersonal skills as well as unique life goals, where we work hard to really create opportunities to connect young people through their interests and their passions that will be really important when they graduate and leave us. And the thing that really pulls all this together are teacher-led design teams that are very strong and very well-supported in each one of our 33 schools. On the next slide, you'll see a quick overview of the Teacher and School Leader Grant. There was 12 or so of these grants awarded from the federal, from the Department of Education. Last fall, we received that $26 million grant. And essentially what it does is focuses on how, we're using those dollars to drive strategies that will reduce gaps in performance between our highest achieving students and our lowest achieving students to include some really significant human capital strategies at teacher recruitment and retention. On the next slide, you will see the renewal, there are three big bucket areas that we talked about earlier in terms of what we will present to the State Board annually. The first is student outcomes. And so we want to give you some quick data points relative to how are, how are the Rowan Salisbury Schools doing relative to the graduation rate, dropout rate, CTE, and some other indicators? If you look at the next slide and graduation rate, you can't see this very well, perhaps, or maybe you can see it better on your computer. We did two things. First, we've opted to kind of benchmark our performance over time to nine other districts as well as the state average in a number of, in those six areas I just referenced. Rowan Salisbury Schools is denoted in the thick red line. And what you'll notice here, relative to the other nine comparison districts, which we have identified as Alamance Burlington, Brunswick, Cabarrus, Davidson, Gaston, Harnett, Iredale Statesville, Moore County, and New Hanover Schools. You'll see that red line shows that relative to the other districts and to ourselves and the state average, there's been a significant increase in the graduation rate since the renewal process began in Rowan Salisbury Schools. And we're very proud of that. In addition, on the next slide, it's important to note that the graduation rate didn't increase by letting more kids drop out of school. In tandem with the significant increase in the graduation rate, there's a significant decrease in the dropout rate. And that's because of some very intentional work occurring in the district. Another point of data that is very positive in the Rowan Salisbury Schools is our graduates with the CTE concentrator. As you know, CTE concentrators are kids who graduate with two to three CTE classes in a pathway, in a designated pathway. Notice that since in the past three years prior to the pandemic hitting, there's been a significant increase in CTE concentrators in Rowan Salisbury Schools, which has an urban core, a rural county outside of the urban core. It's interesting, out of 115 school districts in North Carolina, Rowan Salisbury Schools has the fourth-highest number of CTE concentrators. And we think that because teachers and principals have been given permission to just dream and think a little bit differently rather than just chase the kill-and-drill strategies for the test score, we've been able to improve some other indicators. And that's what renewal in its core is all about. And now we want to take those CTE concentrators, translate that into kids that go on to the local community college, order four-year institutions, and can come back to the county and continue to recruit high-paying jobs. In the next slide, you'll see data about our percent of student schools that meet or exceed or did not meet growth in the three years prior to the pandemic. This is an area of focus for us because we've had a tick up in the percentage of schools who have not met or achieved, exceeded growth. As a part of our strategic plan, we're developing strategies so that we turn this around so that 100% of our schools meet or exceed growth annually. Similarly, on the next slide, you'll see our data with end-of-grade and end-of-course proficiency. We want to, this is an area that we need to pay very close attention to because as we think about how to educate the old child, the whole child, young, old, the whole child, we certainly want to make sure that that intelligence is showing up no matter what the assessment we use. Where there's a North Carolina end-of-grade or end-of-course test, high levels of student engagement and focusing on research-based strategies ought to result in increased absolute performance as well. On the next slide, I provide for you, we also want you to know that we're also looking at our data in terms of each group of students based on race and ethnicity. We're being very transparent with our team about how our students with disabilities are doing as well as English-language learners and students who qualify for free and reduced-price meals. While on the next slide, we would strongly encourage the state to rethink how we designate state-identified low-performing schools. Instead of the model, the criteria being 80%, one test score at one day at one point in time, and 20% based on growth. In Rowan Salisbury Schools, as the state's first and only renewal school district, we will very, we're here to say very strongly that we would strongly recommend that that model be changed so that it's at least 50% proficiency based on one test score and 50% based on growth. And the reason we say that is if Chair Davis comes to kindergarten achieving at this level in reading, Vice Chair Duncan comes to kindergarten at this level, and they both grow but somehow do not reach the proficiency standard, it is a misnomer that that school did not have a year's worth of growth or did not do what we expect the school to do. That said, if you go back to 2014, 15, the district did a really good job in decreasing the number of state-identified low-performing schools from 19 to 13. There's been a tick up in the past couple of years. So we are laser-focused on how we continue to do the work, the good work that happened in 2014, 15 so that we can significantly reduce state-identified low-performing schools. Renewal requirement two that I'm here to share with you is how are the Rowan Salisbury Schools doing in the area of teacher and leader turnover? We're going to look at the teacher mobility rate as well as principal turnover data on the next couple of slides. You'll note here that in terms of teacher turnover, we've had a slight decrease and then an uptick, partly related to the pandemic. That's where we are in terms of teacher mobility. If you go to the next slide, we'll look at principal mobility. And of course, teacher mobility is any teacher leaving the school district to go teach anywhere in the state of North Carolina. Principal turnover, there was a significant decrease. We think that some of the renewal flexibilities have had a positive impact in that regard. We did have some turnover increases, partly as a result of the pandemic and unique circumstances there. But that's our four-year trend data. And the third requirement that I'm here to share with you is how are we doing in the area of student absences and student attendance? You can see in 2018, 19, our student attendance rate overall was 90.1%. It was 92.3% last year. One of the things that we've noticed is although we're above 90% and reached a zenith of 97.5% in 2019, 20, these data require some further analysis. We are now looking at chronic absenteeism, those kids who are absent 10 or more days during their school year. And that's not any different than most school districts in North Carolina that may have a 90% or higher graduate, excuse me, student attendance rate. So the next time we come before you, we'll be glad to talk about what we're doing about chronic attendance and to dig into those data. So I want to quickly summarize what are the glows and groves for Rowan Salisbury Schools. So you can ask yourself, how is this first and only renewal school district in North Carolina performing? On the glow side, we have deep levels of teacher and leader buy-in for our renewal directional system and the strategies that we are employing to educate the whole child and to do it in such a way that it shows up no matter what metric we use, whether it's a state test, the NAEP exam, et cetera. Graduation rates are up, dropout rates are down, and we're a leader in the state in CTE concentrators, fourth in the state. Our areas that need some intense attention, and we are all over it. First, we want to further develop the renewal flexibilities and our local accountability model as we continue to look at data and have data inform our work. We are focusing on increasing schools that meet or exceed growth, and we want to decrease low-performing schools, state-identified low-performing schools, although we tend to somewhat disagree with the way we calculate low-performing schools. That aside, notwithstanding, we're doing the work we need to do. We want to also take the CTE industry credentials earned, the concentrators, and turn those into more credentials so that it has a strong economic impact. And we're really excited about working with our county commissioners and our local community college, Rowan Cabarrus Community College and that work. And we have more work to do to continue to educate our parent and community and to develop more support and partnerships. As you know, thinking differently about how we measure schools, how we think about school growth is not easy when you're used to one system that has been around for more than 100 years. So that's an ongoing part of our work. On the next slide, you'll see that we are needy in our strategic plan development process that we began in January, and we intend to launch that later this fall with our local board's approval. And we're excited about the work we're doing there. Really excited about a 45-member strategic plan steering committee that represents the community, teachers, parents. It's interesting, so many folks in our state where we see declining enrollment in public education don't have kids in the public schools. So we've included those folks who don't have kids in the public schools to be a part of this conversation as well. And we're having conversations with the one local charter school in our district so that we can figure out how do we do this work together rather than operate as adversaries. So our strategic plan emerging themes to date are the following. In the renewal legislation, of course, I just shared with you those three areas that we're required to focus on. In our directional system, we're focusing on a new accountability model that's really formative assessment-driven. We underestimate the power and the value of formative assessments that provide teachers real-time information about where kids are and what do we do next rather than just focusing on one test score, which can be an autopsy at the end of the school year. We are laser-focused on decreasing gaps across subgroups. And we also want to do the work in the area of interpersonal, helping skills, students to develop their interpersonal skills while also developing processes to help our students who have mental health and social-emotional wellness needs, and adults as well, who have those needs. One of the things that our focus group has said, we've done over 50 focus groups in the district, and the themes that we've heard to date in the North Carolina's only renewal school district are we ought to be bold and aggressive and turn around 10 years of declining enrollment, just like the state enrollment in public schools are going down. Rowan Salisbury is no different. We want to figure out how do we really use this renewal flexibility to figure out how we, well, how we turn declining enrollment down and increase enrollment? we continue, how we turn declining enrollment down and increase enrollment? We want to certainly increase the percentage of schools that meet or exceed growth while decreasing low-performing schools. We want to figure out how to take this budget flexibility that we have and to have a more competitive pay structure, pay performance. And the things that 20 years ago, people would say, that's a bad idea. Well, in the landscape we're in now, we're really excited about doing some really exciting and groundbreaking work in that area while we continue to build our relationships with our community and local institutions to include Livingstone College and Catawba College and Rowan Cabarrus Community College. And then finally, as we've come close to the end, I'm almost done, I want to remind you again about our strategic plan renewal vision. It is to take these flexibilities that our local board has, that no other school district out of the 114 other school districts have, figure out, continue to look at our data and figure out, how do we take these flexibilities and our local accountability model, which is formative assessment-driven primarily, not just an end-of-course, end-of-grade test, although we want to get better there, too, to do four things. Educate the whole child in those three big bucket areas, academic skills, interpersonal skills, and unique life goals. Increase students who are enrolled in college, two- or four-year colleges, enlisted in the military, or employed in good-paying jobs, hopefully in Rowan County. Increase in school growth and decreasing low-performing schools. So our next steps, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Madam Superintendent, are to finalize our strategic plan and launch it this fall. We're going to then align all of our resources, whether a Title I, Title II, local state, local state, local budgets, our TSL, $26 million TSL grant, air-serv funding to the extent appropriate, align all those budgetary resources, our time, which is our greatest resource, as well as our professional learning with a short, small number of strategic plan goals that we're going to focus very intently on. Then we're going to monitor and report that progress regularly to the local Board of Education, and we look forward to coming back to this board to report our progress annually. With that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, thank you very much, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Dr. Watlington, thank you so much for taking the time to travel to us in person today. It's always so impactful to see leaders showcasing the work that they're doing day in and day out in the districts that they represent. I want to thank you also for your transparency and highlight the idea that you made the difference between glows and grows and the transparency that you brought to the table, that there are areas that you know that you need to work on, and that starts with knowing exactly where you are. You can't move forward until you know what the present condition is. So thank you for that and for allowing us to see that information and not trying to paint with the wide brush and gloss over because we are talking about your students and their progress and their success.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that my colleagues have questions about this report, and so I see Dr. Superintendent Truitt with a nod. I'll turn to her first.
Thank you, Chair White.
So I have a comment and a question, and I echo Amy's sentiments. Thank you for coming today to deliver this report to us in person. This is incredibly exciting to hear about. You are amongst friends. I don't know that there's anyone in this room who doesn't agree that the state accountability model needs to be changed. And to your point about your work with your community colleges and CTE industry credentials, as part of Operation Polaris, we are actually looking at what a model would look like that includes, as part of the school quality measurement, a district's ability to partner in those ways. So thank you so much for, you're already ahead of the game there. I do want to ask, because I don't want to assume, is it, is it safe to say that your district has not been doing any science of reading training or letters training? I know a few districts have, but the vast majority have not.
We have that waiting in the wings. We're excited about doing it. We've shared with our local board that we'll be doing work around science of reading, and we have a, we, well, I'll just stop right there.
So, so I ask because it doesn't surprise me, and I know I'm speculating here, but it doesn't surprise me that you have this incredible data by all accounts, except for the EOG and the EOC performance. And it doesn't come as a surprise to me because this is very typical of our districts across the state. And it's been stagnant for so long, and the research is clear, it's because of our approach to early literacy instruction. When we look at those numbers, especially when we disaggregate those numbers by income, race, and ethnicity, it's a very bleak picture. And so this is, I have no doubt that in a couple of years, you're going to have very different EOC and EOG data, and I say this as words of encouragement.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I will tell you that we brought Ron Fairchild from the Campaign for Grade Level Reading to Rowan County and invited several other districts, some of whom are performing at a higher level than Rowan Salisbury. But we've been, begun to get together as thought partners to lay the groundwork and prepare teachers so that we can not only fully receive but fully execute on the science of reading training that will be a part of our strategic plan.
That's wonderful. And of course, you'll be, I'm not, off the top of my head, cannot recall which cohort your district is in, but you will, of course, all of your pre-K through fifth-grade teachers, ESL teachers, and sped teachers will be receiving letters training.
And we're excited about it. We understand that, I think it's Mississippi has done some really good work with letters?
Yes, they have, and we have followed suit, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Watson-Dine, thank you so much. Is there a hand to my left? You may go. Thank you so much for this exciting information. What caught my ear is the data around CTE. So I'm wondering, tied to the whole notion of flexibility, is there some policy, local or maybe a policy at the state board level, that you worked around or revised or caused to change so that you could bring about this great story with respect to CTE? What did, what was, what is flexible? What happened in terms of flexibility? I guess that's my question.
Part of it's a strategy of building intentional relationships with our community college, high school faculty, and we meet every other Wednesday morning with the chairman and vice chairman of our county commission, some of our school board representatives, and officials from all three colleges, Livingston College, Catawba College, and Rowan Salisbury Community College. So we're trying to develop articulation, discussions, and agreements that bridge that gap between when kids leave and go on to college. The second thing is, we're looking at how within the rules and without, and outside of the rules, how do we create more opportunities with our local industry for kids to, A, get credit in high school while they are job-shattering or doing some kind of, not just an apprenticeship, but something a little bit deeper than that. And that's one of the areas that we're still working to try to figure out, how we get credit and how we use funding sources differently to drive that work. For example, the biggest barrier, I will tell you, in a diverse district that is 50%, 56%, 56%, about 55% white, about 45% students of color, where the lion's share, 2/3 of our kids qualify for free and reduced lunch, is how do we provide transportation and build that into the school day? Whether it be using a yellow school bus to do these, and that's probably not the most efficient way to do it. But one of the things we're looking at is, how do we actually have transportation, whether it's district vans or other resources, maybe Uber, to get kids where they need to go because the kids who need this opportunity the most to really play with their unique life goals and get out into business and industry and have these apprenticeships and job shadows and to get high school and college credit for doing so, the kids should have transportation barriers and other barriers. So we'll continue to work on that, and I'll be glad to share with you our progress over time.
Thank you very much. Uber, to bring in Uber would probably require a bit of flexibility, maybe, I'm not sure. Thank you, thank you very much. Good luck, good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair White?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Just have a quick question, Superintendent. Would it interest you in the flexibility that you had impersonated, where you were able to hire 87-plus individuals outstanding, other from industry? Is that correct?
That's correct. It includes teachers who will teach specific areas. If you go to West Rowan High School, for example, where they have this huge agricultural program, and they have faculty who have expertise in welding, brick masonry, and things of that nature. Some are in advanced manufacturing areas, and others are teachers who are teaching a poor curriculum, but they bring something unique and different, although they did not go through a traditional teacher education program.
Absolutely, that is fantastic. But here's my question. In the future, maybe you could provide information on the staff development that you provided for those teachers coming in, as well as the particular areas of flexibility you choose in hiring them? That is interesting to me. As we move forward with employing educators in our classrooms. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, absolutely do, and we'll be glad to do that.
Yes, sir, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
You're doing absolutely a great job, it's a worthy job, and keep the wind at your back.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Boyd. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's a compliment.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Watlington. Really appreciate you being here and sharing all the great things about Rowan and being a person who spent a little bit of time in Rowan Salisbury Schools, you know, just excited to hear about all the great things that you're doing. I did have a few questions. I know that, as you shared about, you know, increase in graduation rate and, you know, decrease in that dropout rate, have you looked at comparing it across demographics, specifically race and ethnicity, and how does that compare?
Yes, absolutely. We've increased the graduation rate and decreased the dropout rate for a district as a whole. And if you disaggregate that based on race and ethnicity, there's a very positive story there as well. We just, the next step is to translate all of that into the same for academic performance as measured by whatever test score we use.
And I was really excited, you know, you spoke a lot about teacher-led design teams and really empowering teachers, and I think that that's so important. You know, any advice or suggestions of innovative strategies that you've used in Rowan to help support creating those design teams and the support that teachers need, especially when they're coming into the profession through different pathways?
That's a good question. As I reflect on your question, I think the biggest lesson to date has been, no matter what the innovation, since the research says that the single most important factor in students growing academically is not their income level, ZIP code, but it's where, it's the quality of the classroom teacher. I would say the single most important lesson we've learned is to adopt a philosophy with teachers in particular, nothing for me, without me. We don't want teachers to feel like there's some new curriculum process just superimposed on the school, some other processes superimposed on the school, but to really get teachers at the table, to be a part of the change-making initiatives and to be a part of the innovation. It's not anything really poetic or very profound, but that's our biggest learning to date.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, Ms. Boyd, I do so apologize. So the previous question came from Keisha Clemmons, our 2020 Wells Fargo Teacher of the Year and Principal of the Year, and this is Ms. Floyd, I'll get it straight, I promise, y'all are both rock stars, go for it.
We have followed Ms. Clemmons from Rowan Salisbury and in Guilford County, and we were pleased to host Ms. Floyd in our district recently.
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. White, and it is totally okay. I'm sitting beside Awesomeness, so it's okay.
Well, you put masks on, you were in disguise.
First and foremost, I did recently just visit Rowan Salisbury Schools on Friday, and I do have to say, the, just being in the school buildings and knowing that teachers had a place at the table from the very start, and as you all could see from the graphs that he shared with us, right after it was approved by the board, there was a teacher-led and in part of the design. And I was, you could see that in every building that I entered. And it was very empowering, and I definitely feel like the educators in Rowan Salisbury Schools were truly empowered and excited about the work that they were doing. So thank you so much for making sure that we had space at the table as teachers because it is definitely impactful to our students. The other thing that I really enjoyed as well was seeing this flexibility in the schools also allowed for schools to specifically target the needs of the students that they serve. I went to Hurley Elementary School, and in that school, I was able to see how reading is a target for this school, and they are not, they don't necessarily have all the materials for letters just yet, but they are doing things in that school, and actually, it was some things that I've done in my school as a teacher that are effective and work to help support students as readers. So I was really excited to see my colleagues doing some of the similar things that I know are also effective for building a strong and thoughtful reading life for our students in their schools. So I was just really excited about that, and thank you so much for allowing me to visit and showing me all, I got into a house at Hurley Elementary, so I was just really excited about all that is happening there. I guess my only question would be, I think Ms. Clemmons just shared as well about the professional development as new teachers come onboard, how we can make sure that, no matter what school they are in, how they can best support the students that they're serving, especially when you have such a flex, you know, and making sure that they're getting all that they need as a professional.
We found that professional learning is so important, in part because most districts spend north of 80% of their budget on people and benefits, and so we have to develop the people and not just by products and curriculum and so forth, but develop people to use those tools. But we are, we've reorganized a bit and prioritized professional learning and actually are looking to hire additional staff in that area of professional learning so that we can do just what you said.
Thank you so much.
Any additional questions? One last one.
Thank you so much, Ms. White, and thank you so much for sharing successes of what you're doing with your flexibility and innovation to really meet the needs of your students while supporting your teachers. It's greatly appreciated, and I really enjoyed the presentation. To kind of add on a little bit to Superintendent Truitt's comments, I'm curious about some of your ideas on ways that we could change or modify our existing accountability system so we're able to truly reflect the way that our schools are supporting our students and to highlight the successes that our schools do have with our students so that we're able to get a better picture of where our schools are being very successful and meeting the needs of our pre-K 12 students in North Carolina. While maybe still, we still need to have some accountability with that standardized testing, but what are some other ways that we, as a state, could evaluate schools to give us a better accountability picture?
I would say, number one, among all of the thoughts we have in Rowan Salisbury is to reclassify the criteria for state-identified low-performing schools. Instead of the model being 80% based on a test and 20% based on growth, at a minimum, make the two equally weighted. We've got a lot of folks who are doing a lot of good work, but when we don't tell our story about the progress that Alan Duncan makes relative to what Eric Davis makes, what it does is, I think, one, it demonizes and stigmatizes children inappropriately, two, it causes our public to have, it contributes to public concerns about the quality of public education. Number three, it has a negative economic impact because in my school district, when a school is labeled as state-identified low-performing, the realtors won't show homes in those neighborhoods, nobody will buy homes in those neighborhoods, the kids who are stuck there can't get out, they don't have the options that other children have available to them. they don't have the options that other children have available to them, and it's just this repetitive process. You don't get a grocery store to move in, you've got a food desert. So we're contributing to that. I do think that, I want to be really clear, we believe in accountability. We believe that kids should show up on tests, even tests that have built-in bias. We still have, want to go to law school, we've got to perform on the LSAT exam. Want to go to medical school, we've got to perform on the MCAT, and so forth. So I would say that one thing is what we've identified is the single most important thing that we ought to consider taking a look at. And Lynn Moody, I know she's been beating that drum for many years.
Well, thank you again, and we wish you safe travels back as you continue your good work. And that will conclude this part of the presentation. We do have one item for consent that we will vote on tomorrow, and that is the MC Access Report that we heard last month. Board members, you had a chance to ask questions, review that material, so that's on consent. And Mr. Chair, that concludes our committee work for the day.
Thank you, Ms. White. We'll now take a break and return at one forty-five, one forty-five.